Everybody ready? Call the Water Pollution Control and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 5, 2016 at 7:00 PM. We'll start first with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we get started in the meeting, we have an award tonight for Joanne Wentworth, who served...I'll just read it. "In recognition of service to the town of North Branford presented to Joanne S. Wentworth, this combination is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your 38 years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council, 19 consecutive terms from 1977 to 2015, 38 years. Elected Mayor, 10 terms, 1983 to 2003. Elected Deputy Mayor, five terms, 1979 to '81, '81 to '83, 2005 to 2007, 2007 to 2009, 2013 to 2015. Elected Member, four terms, 1977 to 1979, 2003 to 2005, 2009 to 2011, and 2011 to 2013. Presented by the Town Council, January 6, 2016." We also have a citation. We also have a General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative Vincent Candelora and Senator Ted Kennedy. "Hereby be known that all the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Joanne S. Wentworth in recognition of 38 years of dedicated service to the town of North Branford, Town Council. As with deep appreciation, we honor your efforts to serve the residents of our great community. We commend you and your efforts and wish you luck in the years ahead. Entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses a hope for continued success. Given on the 10th day of November 2015, State Capitol, Hartford, Connecticut. Signed, President Pro Temp and House Speaker."
I'd just like to thank everyone that's supported me over the past 38 years. It's been a long time, and this was a blessing in disguise as far as I'm concerned because I think we're going to have a great council and I think you're going to do a lot of great things. Thank you very much.
And just so the council knows, we have two other plaques and citations for outgoing members, Don Pucci and Vinnie Capri. And I'll make sure that those get to those individuals.
Thank you.
Next is roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quonah.
Here.
Councilor Ann Ollie.
Here.
Councilor Arndt.
Here.
Councilor Trenora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Manah.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Booth.
Here.
Next is approval of minutes of the previous meeting, December 8, 2015, Water Pollution Control and Town Council.
There's a couple of corrections I saw. Page eight, I think, it said Mike Duty. Let me find it. Motion, oh, it says pass unanimously, pass in unanimously in the 920. Roll call vote, page nine. That's not worded properly. And somewhere elsewhere it said Mike Duty had voted.
That's page two. Page two, the first in favor shows Mayor Duty, both in favor and abstaining.
Page two, right. Mike Duty's both in favor and abstaining. That's pretty productive, Mike. Uh, page eight, let me find it.
It's number M. It's just the wording.
Just the wording is incorrect. Pass in unanimously. And the first page, in favor, Mike Duty and abstain, Mike Duty, Mayor Duty. And then page two, it's the same situation.
It's under item B.
I'm in favor of the minutes with those corrections. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Next, underwater pollution control authority agenda correspondence and citizen statements. There's no correspondence. Any citizen statements underwater pollution control?
Yeah, that shouldn't say none.
Unfinished business. New business underwater pollution control. And last is citizen statements and petitions underwater pollution control. Now we'll move into the regular Town Council agenda, reports of boards, committees, boards and commissions, permanent project building committee.
I was unable to attend the December meeting, but I know the project for the STW conversion that was extended on the STEEP grant to December 1st, and that project has been completed and the money has been spent. The final money was for, if you've been up there, they put an awning over the entrance on the sidewalk that the seniors use when they drop them off from the bus on the sidewalk. So it goes all the way from the end of the sidewalk where the bus drops them off, all the way up to the door. It looks very nice. And they also have on the inside a digital board. It's kind of like a calendar of upcoming events and things that are happening at the desk as you walk in. And they also have a curtain that they purchased to put, that they can draw across the big bank of windows in the gym so that they can use the gym for more activities. And they are starting to use, plan more things in there. So that was the final money that was spent from the STEEP grant on that project. And the TBS project, the roof project, the roof is complete, done. They're off, have been offsite since just before Thanksgiving. They came back and did some landscaping work of the area that was disruptive. If the grass doesn't grow or anything, they'll be back in the spring to fix that. There were some minor leaks mid-December. The roofing company was called and they came out immediately to address those issues. The roof looks great, and I know it's just some final punch list items that they have to finish on.
Next is economic development.
Yes, the Economic Development Committee Commission met on December 7. The minutes are included in the packet. They also met again last night. They're working on a number of initiatives. As I mentioned before, business visitation being one of many things. They're looking at what other towns are doing in terms of economic development and grant writing. They're looking at what they're doing in terms of publications. They're looking at other business type programs, organizations if you will, to join and so forth. I know that they are present, members are present here tonight, and they are planning to address the council under item 10, citizens' statements and public comments about the development of 1599 Boxen Road. Their meetings are, through the addition of Chris Kranick, are pretty robust in terms of their discussion, and I think this group is pretty energized to do some different initiatives for economic development and assist them as much as I can.
Have they discussed a liaison at Town Council?
Liaison, I think they've talked in terms of, in the past, in terms of the center plan discussion, having a liaison and potentially going forward depending on what this body does with that development.
Thank you.
Yeah, so their next meeting, I believe they're scheduled to meet again next week.
Next is Park and Recreation.
Park and Rec Committee met on December 21st. They had three items on the agenda, one of which is going to be addressed again later on unfinished business, but they discussed the length of the Potato Corn Festival. And after some discussion, they decided on a three-day festival Friday through Sunday as being the best option. They did vote positively to forward to Town Council for a decision on the reappointment of Roseanne Krajewski as festival coordinator. And they also discussed compensation suggestions as well.
Thank you. Police Commission.
The Police Commission will meet next week on the 11th of January.
Fire Commission. The Fire Commission met, but the chief was away.
Good evening. For your information, the Fire Commission does meet this Thursday at Company Two at 7:30. But on their behalf, what I'd like to provide you with is a summary of activity for the calendar year 2015. It'll be presented to them as well. So just as a quick note, not associated with any particular location in this town. Calls for service are up 7.2% over the previous year. So here you find data, culmination of our firehouse software system and our next-gen CAD dispatch system. That's where we acquire our data. So again, I continually keep the Town Council informed of the fire department's activity. And to go along with that, on the 16th of December, following a pre-built meeting with all the interested parties with the Tactical Fire Training Center located behind Public Works, we started building. So up to this date, I strongly encourage you in your free time, take a write down behind there because of a great amount of work has been done. The physical structure, the framework is 100% complete. And parting any weather changes, we've taken the weather to our advantage. I would anticipate that we can look at completion in about another five weeks, again, parting any weather changes. So it's progressing very well, and all parties are performing to their contracts and will win the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met yesterday, and thanks to Mike, he received a proposal from a company called DTC, an assessment company, and they're willing to do an assessment of the current condition of this station at no cost to the town, and I'll come up later after vote by the Town Council. But narrowly, that cost him $7,500. Also, as part of, we discussed as part of their new strategic plan that they're developing, the Board of Ed is having a study completed of the high school, again, as part of strategic plan by the New England School Development Council, and hopefully we'll be getting that report within the next couple of months. The next meeting is on January 25th.
Help me with this. Been in that school a dozen times, not more. Built in the 60s?
Yes.
Okay. About due.
The, and so as a part of their strategic plan, that's one of the things they're using in the New England, I'm sure you're familiar because you were on the board with Nezdek.
Right.
Nezdek's doing the study right now.
Wait, please.
I was told within a month or two, they're coming up, I think they're coming in in a week to visit eyes.
Thank you. Next is Board of Education, Town Council Subcommittee, Communication Subcommittee.
Well, I think we need to revise that committee too, because there were some members on the committee that are no longer on the council. So I think we need to look at who's on the committee, who wants to go on it, and because they're going into their budget season, I really think we need to get a date, at least have one meeting with them so that we can open up the dialogue with them.
Yeah, would you like to?
Maybe we should, yeah.
Visit that, put that on the agenda.
Yeah, could you put that in on the agenda and just get a list of the people on those committees, on that committee? Next item is Town Managers' Report.
Yes, in your packet you will find the first item there, I believe, is this, is Fire Company Number Two has sent in a request. So this is more informational sharing purposes, that there's an opportunity for the company to get a energy light savings program through Wallingford Electric to improve energy efficiency within the, and outside the building through a light program. And their proposal, as you see, is looking at labor materials of about $32,000 with a rebate of $13,000. So what it comes down to is they're looking at partnering with the town, because the town is on the hook for what we do is per the lease agreement, we pay the utility bill. So it's in our best interest to join with them in this rebate and energy efficient program to try and reduce the bills, and it looks like it could be a payback over about three year period. So realizing that the town doesn't necessarily have $32,000 sitting around, and certainly nothing we have budgeted for, they'd be prepared to front-end that with a promise from the council through the budget process in the next fiscal year to allocate the $32,000 to come back to them for this, for this project. And that's sort of the, sort of the rough outline of that. And I just wanted to throw it out to see if that made sense. To me, it makes sense, I think, in terms of long-term, if we're paying the bill. But I'd like to explore it more and ask if there are any questions to the council, if we see any problems with that type of scenario, knowing that we can't certainly commit until the budget process, if we, until we get through that process, or potentially we'll get some other, some capital numbers that we may be able to squeeze $32,000 out.
Why not, why only Company Two?
They went in on their own to pursue this and then, you know, gave it to me to let me know that what they were working on. Quite frankly, Anthony's been working on a townwide program as well.
Right.
It was just, they just happened to be out in front of this.
Okay.
And realize that because we're not all in the UI, some of, obviously we have Wallingford Electric, we have UI, and they run different programs, but this one's available, and they went after it. And they have, and the reason that's here is because they have a short shelf life in which to do this, it has to be completed by, I think, by June of this year, 2016.
You bring up a valid point. We look, we have a firm actually going out and reviewing all the town buildings to see energy efficiency programs, and our desire basically would be to put all our shares together and make one capital project going forward July 1st. As Mike explained to you, Company Two doesn't work for it because they've got the commitment already from Wallingford Electric to do that now. So as this company's going through and analyzing the other town buildings for energy efficiency, they'll come back with a number, in our case, what our share is, and again, the hope would be to lump those together and put it in July 1st for a capital project. In the UI's territory case, they let you pay on bill financing. So while your utility bill will change, will drop theoretically by efficiencies, the bill remains the same, so you're paying that difference along the same revenue stream. And while it's not that big, they want the money upfront. So the bill, whether it's the, we have three firehouses in District Two, we have the Smith Library we're looking at, Stanley T. Williams, all these buildings that have, you know, high energy usage to make them more efficient. And again, our hope is to lump all that town share into one number to throw into the CIP next year.
So, so we would have, where would the rebate, when does, how does that work from Wallingford Electric? Does it come all upfront? Is it over time? Is it?
Typically, I think it's, we've done some smaller rebates with them, and it typically comes in a check after, after the installation and inspection has been done, that the work has been done, and then if they rebate, they cut a check. And they would be cutting a check to, you know, Company Two.
So we wouldn't have to come up with the 32.8, we would only have to come up with the 19.6.
Along that same line, in discussions with Company Two, the town pays the electric bill.
Right.
So we recruit the majority of the savings, but there is some savings to the fire company as well from light bulb replacement. So the number hasn't been determined yet, but it's, say it's a 90-10 split on that net number. It shouldn't be all our money. There should be some, Company Two should put something towards it as well, because they are going to have a savings of, like, you know, bulb replacement. So that's up for negotiation as far as what the actual savings is, but they're willing to put some money towards it as well. So don't look at the net number, it's net number times a percent, what hasn't been determined yet.
And then also I saw attached to this, it looks, I don't know if this is the lease, but it's for Company Three. Is the lease for Company Two the same as Company Three?
Yeah, we just, just to show you that front page, that basically all lease has the 1A, which is 100% electricity and so forth in terms of the utility bill.
Anthony, one more question. I can't find the estimate right now, but I know it's in the pack and I saw it earlier. There seemed to be one wild card in there where the estimate was for the replacement of a specific number of fixtures, but it specifically excluded, yeah, Mike's got it here. Does not include replacement of ceiling pads as needed. Anybody take a look at what ceiling pads are and how many are needed?
I think that the document, the three, two-by-four tiles, ceiling tiles.
Okay.
I'm not sure. That wouldn't be our concern, that'd be Company Two's concern.
Yeah, their concern. I talked to Ken Newbig, and it was, that was something that they were going to eat the cost on.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I think there's, I think there's more to it than my talk to Ken about what Anthony had brought out about, you know, a cost sharing or some, you know, 10% of their cost for this. Ken's indication is there's more, which I don't have the detail, but more beyond just the ceiling pads that they're going to have to be put out in terms of costs, but he didn't have a full detail, but I'm hoping to get that.
So this proposal is just to give us an idea of dollar amount, but would it have to go out to bid? Or is this, because it says, according to the lease, it says that they will follow all purchasing and bidding policies of the town. So if it's over $7,500, which it looks like it is.
Yeah, this looks like a bid.
Would we have to put it out to bid? I mean, I'm not sure how this works, or if you have to have a company that, something because you're getting a rebate from Wallingford Electric, I know on some of those, there's only certain companies that can do it, or you have to be on the preferred list or something. So I don't know how that works, but I'm also reading part of the lease that says they have to abide by the bid requirements, so.
Yeah, that's, it's one of the sticky points, I think. I think they were looking at it to try and do it on their own. That's why they were going to, you know, front-end it or pay for it upfront and then have the town reimburse them so that they would have this quote that they would use with Ivy Electric and proceed that way. That would be outside, obviously, of the private entity, the fire company two, doing it outside of the town guidelines and rules, or procedures and policies. I think that's a way, my impression is.
Because it's their building and then.
Their building, and they want to, they want to control who does work on their building.
But it says here, "In the event that the fire company requests funds from the town for improvements, the fire company shall follow all purchasing and bidding policies of the town." So, so I don't see that as a way of, so they front-end the money and they're trying to avoid doing that, then why is that line in the lease? Because they are requesting funds from the town.
But.
It's item seven.
Are we just, tonight we're just saying, yeah, this is a good idea and everyone should be looking at switching to LED lighting.
Right, we're not approving it, but it's just.
Tonight we're saying, hey, this is a good idea, let's see if it makes it through the budget.
I'd still like to know how much money we're talking about, and we won't have that unless we have a bid, unless we have three bids. That's a lot of money.
That's correct, but we're not approving $1 tonight.
They're making a commitment on.
I don't think they made the commitment yet, correct? They just gave us for information.
There's no place on the agenda for us to make a commitment.
This is, this was just informational purposes. If you think this is worth discussion and action for the next meeting, then I'll bring it back for the agenda and bring the necessary information in terms of the questions that you've had thus far and try to make an informed decision at the next meeting.
So I think it's a good idea and we should look at it further at the next meeting. I agree.
I think you're right.
And I think every one of you should be doing the same thing in your own home.
Okay.
And between now and, you know, something else, another question about, just shoot me an email and we've got the information.
Next is update of Recreation Department slash Senior Center Personnel.
Yeah, again, informational, just to let you know that we're going through some transition. We've had a one retirement and one resignation for the two positions in the senior center side. Martha, van driver, is retired, and Judy, program coordinator, is left to take another position in Branford, so working to fill those positions and going through the process. Hopefully we'll have someone first to fill. Those are important positions and the department doesn't really function without them. So Lauren is doing a great job juggling and keeping the senior center going, and, you know, we'll do the best we can until we get those. They just happen to come at the same time, and then those things happen. So do the best we can, get them filled with qualified individuals and move on.
Next is Community Events and Presentations.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Department of Public Health and our local fire department, January is a good time to check your CO detectors, smoke detectors, radon, make sure you have batteries in your smoke detectors. There's also a website, www.c t.gov/DPHradon. You can go online and get test kits, they're available through January, and there's also a phone number, 1-800-LUNG-USA. And they're also available at our local hardware store in town. So I urge everyone to make sure they have smoke detectors and CO detectors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Liz, you're up.
Yeah, save me the numbers. Happy New Year, everyone. And I'm Elizabeth Kaplan. Happy New Year, everyone, and I'm Elizabeth Kaplan, member of the Economic Development Council. This is our chairperson, Jan Fisch. We have Chris Kranek and Joan Tudor also here this evening. We understand on your agenda, you're going to be discussing the preferred developer status of Center Plan. We understand that you have concerns, we have concerns as well, but we want to hear, we were here this evening to support the development of 1599 Fox and Road. We want to talk a little bit, for the public who may not be aware, that this process has been about three years in the making and the town authorized the Yale Center, excuse me, the Yale Urban Design Workshop to do a study of that property, as you know, and from that, there were two charrettes or workshops that were held, many citizens attended. It was very hands-on, there was a lot of give and take, and from there arose a vision, and the vision was that this property would be developed as a mixed-use development with as much open space as possible and to also increase our tax base, and we do fully support that. This might be a hiccup in the road, we're not assuming what you're going to decide tonight, but I don't know if Jan has anything to add to that.
Well, we've worked a long time on this, have learned a lot going through three years of this, and we think that the people in North Branford, it was a very, very transparent process we went through. We had a lot of people involved in the charrette, and the general consensus was that they would like something that is attractive in the Center Plan, something that is welcoming, that looks nice when people come to town or even when they drive through. And with the RFP process, I think we have more leverage than if the property should be sold or something of that sort. I hope that we are able to go through, whether it be the Center Plan or someone else, but I think it's a well worthwhile property to develop. There will be certainly additional tax dollars, which I think will help, and we hope that you remain on board. You've been very good to the Economic Development Commission with your support over the last three years, and we hope you're happy with what turned out.
And we'd also like to add, we appreciate being included in whatever further discussions you have on this project, and you have Dan Arman, who was also part of the economic development during this charrette process and the Yale Urban Design Process, and we are happy to be a resource. Michael's a wonderful resource, Carrie's a great resource, and we welcome any input and questions that you might have in the future.
Thank you.
Liz, I can have a question.
Sure.
Since Center Plan or someone else, is there a someone else?
Not currently.
Not as of now.
I think so.
No, you'd have to do another RFP, correct?
You know, we'll have to explore our options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just had one more. It came in late from a citizen, Scott Small. He was also attended the meeting, the EDC meeting last night, and he submitted a letter he wanted me to give to the council in his support of development of 1599 Fox and Road as well. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Resignations and appointments. We received a resignation from Mark Fieldman of the Harrison Waste and Recycling Committee. Just needed a motion to accept his resignation.
Now, I would also like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes. I'd like to amend the agenda on this item to, we'll call it 11B, for the appointment of council liaison, and I'd like to do it to the Fire Commission and the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Second.
Well, in favor, or real call?
Oh, appointment of who?
It's just, he's just amending the agenda.
I see, all right, okay, yeah.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
And I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. It would be 11C, co, to appoint a co liaison to Park and Rec.
I'll second that.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes. So having, having said that, and I'm not, I can't, I'm not exactly sure, I can't remember how this goes. I know a lot of the council liaisons, I don't know if they're just, are they appointed by the mayor or does the council vote on it? That's going to count, right?
The council should appoint.
We voted.
Council appoints, okay. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mike Duddy as the council liaison to the Fire Commission.
Second.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes. Abstain, sorry. Need to vote for myself.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
As far as Permanent Project Building Committee goes, I would like to appoint Al Rose as liaison from the council.
Second.
Real call?
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
And as far as Park and Rec is concerned, I would like to appoint Rose Angeloni as co liaison to Park and Rec.
I'll second that.
Real call? Yes.
Counsel, sorry, Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Abstain.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Sorry, Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
And I also have some other appointments. Board of Fire Commissioners, Ken Ash, term to expire 12.
I think we have to amend the agenda first because they're not on the agenda.
Oh, for regular appointments.
Yeah, they're just regular appointments.
So we would have to amend the.
Go 11D.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to 11D for.
Regular appointments.
Regular appointments.
Second.
Okay, first one is Board of Fire Commissioners, Ken Ash. All right, sorry. Going a little too quick.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
No.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Okay, 11D, regular appointments. Board of Fire Commissioners, Ken Ash, term to expire 12-115. New term expires 12-118.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Real call?
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
We've always printed proposed appointments to boards and commissions on the agenda for consideration before we took them under consideration or voted on them.
That's precisely correct.
Why are we changing that?
I did email him to Mike and there was a miscommunications and they never got on the agenda.
I'm not adverse.
I mean, we could bring it, we could bring it back next month, but.
I think that's appropriate. Why don't we put all of these people on the agenda and then vote on them next month after people have had a time to review this? You've probably got 15 or 20 people here that are going to be nominated, which is fine. I would just like time to look it over and consider it.
That's, for the record, that's why I voted no, because I think we need time to, you know, look these people over.
Oh, we could put them on for the next agenda.
I have a question. I don't see East Shore Health District, I know new to the game, does that always have a liaison or never, never have a liaison?
Well, they had two, if I'm correct, was Joanne Wentworth and.
Joanne's term is expired.
Somebody else.
But that, that's their board of directors, and I don't know what their terms, what their requirements are for their board of directors.
This isn't for all the vacancies.
So I think that's an issue that Mike would have to find.
We did have two representatives, I think, Joanne and somebody else.
There's two for the town, I just didn't know if the town's director acts as a liaison to this council.
I don't know what their requirements are for their board of directors, like, how it's defined as to who those members are, so I think we would need to, Mike, if you can get that for us.
Yeah, I don't think we ever have. So if we finish, if we finish the motion on the floor, I'll withdraw my motion if the second or wants to withdraw that, and then we can put these on the next agenda.
I withdraw my second.
Fine.
Thank you.
Help me again with this, with the East Shore. I know the town can send two people. I think Bill Shody is one. I think his term is current. Joanne's, I think, is expired.
I don't know how they got appointed, that was my point, and so I asked the town manager to get the information in regards to the.
And I don't think she was liaison, I think she.
Right, it's not a liaison position.
Not a liaison.
It's a board of, it's their board of directors, so I don't know what the rules are.
And we should go through the process of nominating one or more people and then vote on it.
Right, so what, once we find that out, that would be fine.
Well, you answered my question, it's not a liaison.
That is correct, they're not liaisons, they're just regular appointment, and you have two, and we'll go through that. In addition, I will have to add to the next meeting, the last meeting, the Fire Commission appointment, Ed Frenier and Fran Leskovich, the terms weren't accurate, so I'll have that redone for the 19th as well, to correct that in the minutes for their terms.
Okay.
Next item is unfinished business.
One second. Did you read, did you, I'll reverse this motion, okay?
Okay. Next is unfinished business discussion in action, updates to define benefit plan documents, completion, table July 9, 2012.
Still table.
Still table.
Next is reappointment of Roseanne Korduski, Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator, table December 8, 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to table that appointment until after our executive session. We're just moving it, we're just pulling off until we make an executive session.
Next item is approval, space needs assessment for Police Department, table December 8, 2015.
I would like to make a motion to utilize the services of the ETC consulting firm, and I'd like to thank Mike, of course, I lost my copy of that.
Right, I have.
Everyone should have a copy that looks like.
Thank Mike for this opportunity to have a needs assessment done of the current condition of the police department, police station. Ordinarily, it would cost $7,500 to have it done. I don't know if any of you have ever gone to conferences where people put their business card into a bowl, you know, and the vendor pulls out winner at the end, and fortunately, Mike's card was pulled out with that vendor, so this company, which does this kind of thing all the time, would do the scope of work, as you see on page two, at no charge, and would give us a good idea of the condition, the current conditions, a needs assessment of the current condition of our police station. I'd like to make that motion, and we accept that proposal.
At that price, I'll second it.
I'm a little surprised by the $7,500 when old Sabrekin told us, had led us to believe that it would be considerably less.
Well.
I'm not complaining.
I'm sure there are all different companies that do these kinds of things.
My only question is, is there any type of documentation of what they would actually be doing?
Well, the scope of the work is on the second page.
Yeah, but I mean, is there any contract that we have to sign?
Yes, there is, there is a, there is something that Mike has to sign.
Should we have the town turn and review before signing it, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So can we vote on it, just continue?
With that condition, sure.
Yep.
Real call?
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Arnn?
Yes.
Counsel Candelara?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Next is review and approval of draft CME memorandum of agreement dated December 8, 2015.
Yes, I was hoping to have newly revised language for tonight's meeting, but it is not yet available. Pat had raised the issue, having reviewed the MOA about the clause not allowing each individual town to extract itself from the agreement, so I believe West Haven is taking, I'm sorry, West Haven is taking leave in their legal counsel and I'm hopeful they're going to be in contact with Pat about that in terms of trying to clear up or add that language, simple language in there, and that should be ready for the 19th, I would hope.
Thank you.
Hello, you're.
So just, we'll table that to the 19th.
Yeah, just continue to the next meeting, yeah.
Next is review of preferred development status, Center Plan.
Is that part of our executive session?
You can do that, you certainly have, because it's a, we're still technically in negotiations with Center Plan. You can, if you desire, go into executive session, discuss it there and then come out in public session later, like you would for the.
Joe, I thought we wanted to do this in public, though. I guess, I think about it, that's fine. Yeah, let's. I think we need to have a discussion in public.
I guess so.
Well, it would be my thought that we have, you know, ask Center Plan to attend our next meeting to find out exactly where they're at so we can determine whether we drop them as preferred developer status and, you know, explore other options, but I'd like to know from them why we should keep them as preferred developer status.
I see no reason to extend any timeframe with them. They've been, and thank God I missed that meeting, well, maybe I was wrong to miss that meeting, but I don't believe that they were vetted properly. I don't believe that they have any chance of doing this. I think that they have, they've proven that. They, the ball's been in their court for, you know, seven, eight months. We don't have $1. There's not one real estate deal in the world that can tie up a so-called, you know, and they're calling it a million-dollar property.
We have no commitment.
I'm not calling that, we have no commitment.
Nothing.
There is no commitment.
No communication.
Other than an article in the newspaper saying that somebody said they were a preferred developer, we have absolutely nothing. So now we're sitting there and we're doing absolutely nothing with this property. I don't know what their problem is. They, maybe, maybe they're just having some growing pains, but they're not somebody who I want to enter into business with. And again, the proposals that were going back and forth, all the expense was on the town for the cleanup, so my recommendation is that we put it in the budget process this year and get quotes to have for that, to see what it would cost to clean up the property, demo the buildings, and then have a piece of property that's clean. So when you make a deal with somebody, you're not saying that, oh, and, you know, we'll clean it up, but we're going to backcharge you for it.
It does remove a variable from the whole deal.
Well, Dan, you're suggesting inviting them to the next meeting?
I'm suggesting inviting them to the next meeting to, you know, see if, if there's a reason why we should not remove them.
I would love to see them now in the same room.
You know.
Looking forward to that.
Looking forward to that.
Mike, have you had a discussion?
Three years, what's another one?
Have, Mike, have you had any discussions with them since a couple of months ago?
Well, yeah, I mean, I've had one discussion since probably since the last meeting, that, you know, the council is going to be having this on the agenda, they're going to make a decision in some sort, maybe, and I just told them, I said, we're still waiting for information, and...
Did they ever send that information that we...
No, we still don't have it.
If you guys remember, you appointed or agreed that Joe Fawnin was going to negotiate a contract with them seven or eight months ago.
We never, right.
And I know Joe well enough to know he didn't drop the ball.
No.
Is there any reason to believe that they will show up next month if invited?
Then we'll have our answer.
Well, right, well... The last time they were here, they weren't, they weren't changing the scope of the project from the charrette already, right?
Yes.
Well, they weren't here, they sent that word in.
Yeah, a couple of things that, in terms of negotiating team and how we were doing this, we had, as outlined by the RFP, we jumped from doing a memorandum of understanding to sort of cutting to the chase and doing a purchase and sales agreement, and that's where we threw it on to them to come up with it, they put the document together, sent it to us, in the meantime, they were supposed to come up with that rendering, and that's what we never got, was the, you know, the different rendering or placement of the parcel and the buildings and the cuts, and they were seeking out DOT, which they did, and, but yet, that's just hypothetical with DOT, it's not an application of DOT in terms of a permit, or saying, hey, this is what we want to do, how do we need to, you know, get permitted, and I think, to some extent, Al might be right, it might be going.
Weren't they involved with, weren't they involved with the deal up here on Route 80 as well, the one that was the dollar store that was supposed to go in?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I could be wrong, but I didn't hear that.
You should ask that question.
Okay.
But, see, my thing is, guys, why would we want them to come here and tell us something? When, you know, we already had that. They, they came up with this plan, and they came here, and when it came down to writing, putting it in writing in a legal document, and showing us what we were going to get, and what they were going to do, six months go by, and they do nothing.
So let's give it another two weeks.
No, but why, give them another month to come up with a document for us to look at?
No, two weeks, to find out, so we can...
You're going to have a bullshitter come into the room and bullshit you.
Give them another couple of weeks, so you can ask those questions.
And then what are they going to do?
Find out what their answer is, and then we know what our, we know we can explore.
They, the ball's been in their court for six months to get a legal document to us.
Got a few new councilmen, too. I wouldn't mind hearing what they say, you know, we're not putting it off six months, a month.
Oh, two weeks.
Well, you know, give us...
Okay.
Yeah, we're under no real pressure, you know.
I give them 30 days.
We're under no real pressure.
I wouldn't give them 30 days.
Well, that's two meetings.
The next meeting is on the 19th.
Yeah, the next meeting.
If they don't show up...
Mike, can you contact them and just ask them to...
Of course, of course I can, and, you know, at the last meeting, I was prepared and came to say, listen, what I thought the directive or direction should be is to say, to take that purchase and sales agreement, to say, listen, this is what we want for a deposit, this is what we want for a timeline for the rendering or the new site plan, revised site plan, and this is what we want in terms of timeline for an application, and that way, you throw it right back at them, and say, this is sort of like the last final offer to say, listen, if we don't see a revised site plan for this document, and...
A timeline.
We don't see, say, whatever number you want to put in there, $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 in terms of deposit, and we don't, and we don't close this purchase and sales agreement by the end of January, then forget it, and if we don't see a application to the town by April 1st, then forget it. I mean, those are the timelines, I think, we sort of, you know, fish or cut bait kind of thing, and put them on, put them on very, very firm timelines, but we didn't, we didn't get that far, so...
Have there been no timelines given to them since?
No.
From the beginning? They've had no timelines?
It's pretty much fallen off of the planning stage, so to speak. My inclination would be to contact them, determine whether or not they really have any genuine interest in the project at this point. We may get an answer that they're just doing other things, in which case, it's all moot, there's no point in wasting our time and bringing them in here.
Right.
On the flip side, if they do have interest in going forward with the plan, what they should understand is we need a firm contract with a real deposit, which is, in my mind, I don't want to speak for everybody, but in my mind, it's 10% of the contract price, around $100,000, and not $20,000, and we need that in the near term, that's within a matter of weeks, not some endless process of months. If they're inclined to come in and discuss that, I'd like to hear from them. I personally would like to hear from them.
Yeah, I think those are...
Well, I think we should tell them that we're expecting 10% down, just like any other real estate deal. It's not, we're not inventing the wheel there. Well, we were inventing the wheel, because, you know, there were people saying we should give it away for a dollar.
I think you're right on point, Joe, I think that's, I can certainly convey that and tell them, that's the expectation.
Hush, quiet. Do we, do we have any, do we have any legal obligation to these people?
No.
No, nothing?
No.
Thank you.
It's almost comical that there's been articles and everything like they're doing something. They didn't have a signed contract, this, the previous council voted and said, Al, let's negotiate with them.
That's what the articles...
And then it's all over the, you know, newspaper, that they're this preferred, you know, and again, and I do want to say this, you know, they were not vetted properly.
How, how was that?
That would be executive session discussions.
Okay.
But our people that should have vetted them didn't vet them properly.
Next item is approval of location at 298 Forest Road for dog parks.
I'd like to move to approve the location of 298 Forest Road, further described by map showing a highlighted area approximately two-thirds of an acre as a future home of the dog park.
I got a question.
Well, you have a question, we can second it.
I got a second. I'll take a second.
Okay.
Can I ask my question?
Yes.
Sometimes I like dogs more than people. This is a safe facility.
Okay, let me, let me explain why that location. Originally, they wanted something way, way in the back, which would require probably about another year and a half of preparation of the area. In talking Franny, it would have required, first of all, getting a road down there, then taking down the trees, then driving the stumps, he just doesn't have the time to do that. That, that particular, if you look at the map, it's a very private location, okay?
There was parking.
But it borders, it borders the street.
It borders the street, there will be two, two entrances to it, also, that is an area right now where a lot of people go anyway now with their dogs, because they follow the trails and they walk. The, it would require very little preparation on Franny's part, it would make it a lot easier in the long run. I know Eric is here, and he can answer some of the questions that I can't answer, but it would be then up to the committee, who has, they have had, they've gotten enough money to then put the fence up. Eric, he might want to explain more to you.
Yeah, please. The fence is a good sign. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hi, Eric Ochs, 62 Burn Cliff Drive, anything? So what questions do you have?
Well, obviously, I don't want to see any dog running into a, I mean, thoroughfare.
Yeah, so, so the location is actually pretty ideal, I think, I think everything that Marie said is really key, it's a very flat space, it's a safe space, that no one had a, had a preferred spot for the location, we'd been through the process of trying to figure out which were the best spots, and this came up after long discussions with meeting, multiple meetings with, with Parks Rec, Fran, Marie, Mike, myself, et cetera, and so this location, I think, is very good, it's flat, there's possibility for electricity, you can see it from the road, so that people, you know, if you're out in the woods, then that's unsafe location if there's hunters or people, you know, kind of crazy people. In terms of the, this is pretty standard locat, standard rules for dog parks, a six-foot fence is typical for that, you know, when the dogs are being, it's like if you have a child in a playground, you're responsible for that child while the child is there, so, you know, if your dog jumps over six-foot fences, then maybe that's not the place to go, but the town's not liable for that, the owner would be liable for that.
If I'm not mistaken, the fence would go down into the ground...
Yeah, so it's six, it's a six-foot fence, but a, but a portion of it is under the, would be buried, so that the dog wouldn't be able to go.
There's no liability to the town if one dog...
So the liability of the town, so when we make the park, and this was all in the proposal that was made, that the state of Connecticut is very clear about the statutes that the person who's either the owner or the person who's, who's taking care of the dog is liable for the actions of that dog.
So it's entered at your own risk?
Exactly, and the town is liable for the, and the reason this is going through such a long and public process is that the town is liable for the creation of the park, so for example, if we don't pick a proper fence installer, and someone gets hurt from the fence, then the town can be liable for that, but once, once it's set up as a town park, then people would use it at their own risk. For example, like if a child goes on a playground and fell off the swing, that's not necessarily the town's responsibility, unless the swings were improperly created.
Okay. And will...
So right now, we're, we're in the process of picking a spot, so the, the long process that, over the past couple of years, we raised over $10,000 with the, upon permission of the town council to begin raising money, so that if we reach that goal, then we could start the actual planning process. So we finished the $10,000 goal about, probably about a year, a little bit over a year ago, and since then, we've been really working through the town, and getting all the town people, town function, and agents of the town together, to pick up, pick the best place, to figure out what would, would work, work best, come up with a timeline, et cetera, and that's where we are. So we went to town Parks and Rec, and I'm not sure if they, they've talked about this space, I'm sure, and that this was approved by them, so that's why it's come out, up before the town council.
And let's say it goes through tonight, that this is the place, when do you think you'd consider that?
So, yeah, so the next steps would be to create an actual site plan, and then to come up with a real, get some bids for the, the actual elements of the park. Once, once it's actually on paper, we have a, have a plan, then we could start having people donate actual money towards specific things, so we're really just waiting to find out what, you know, once you can say this is where it's going to be, then businesses will want to, will be more likely to want to donate fencing, or, or, you know, it's real, it's, for the last three years, we've been talking about an idea, now we're actually going to be talking about a piece of land, which is really exciting.
Sponsors.
Is there going to be enough parking?
But I've seen it with baseball fields.
Yeah, well, it's, it's hard to get from the idea stage to the creation stage, and I think that this is a great location for that, so...
Will there be enough parking that's adjacent to other areas that are in high, high demand?
Right, so this, this area is actually currently already being used for recreation, the tractor pulls are happening on that space, so unless there's a tractor pull and tons of dogs at one time, there's a lot of available parking there. Another, as time goes on, and we, you know, we can always evolve things and make things better, that there's opportunity to make this accessible for handicapped people and for wheelchairs, which there was no opportunity to do that, and then in a spot that would have to be, be clearly dug out. I mean, basically, it's, it's really ready right now to put a fence up and, and start, and start.
Are there any lighting issues that we need to worry about?
So the, there's really no lighting issues, because the park is open from dusk to dawn. No, dawn to dusk.
That's, that's in our town regulations, that parks close at dusk.
Exactly.
That's fine.
It's a, it's a, it would be a town park, so whatever rules are defining town park use, that would be the same for this park.
I'm going to make the motion to table this for two weeks, only because I'm having a hard time getting my head around it, because for the three years, I thought the property was over here, and this is the first that I'm seeing this. Now, they're saying they talked to Franny, I haven't heard from Franny, he's not here tonight to tell me this, they're saying they talked with recreation, I don't see any backup on that, that, you know, I mean, we have all these big field studies and everything, you've got a barn there, now that's got two sides of it taken up by this, I know, I've talked to Franny, and he's thinking of using that barn for storage and stuff, so I see no harm in this waiting two weeks, so that at least me, as a counselor, can get this, can get the questions answered, because this is the first time I'm seeing this piece of property, and then, and then I'm going to go into the effect of a developer, you know, this is prime road frontage, great to see dogs running around there, but I just don't know how we got here from over here, and so I've got a motion on the floor to table this for our next meeting.
I think I explained that, though.
I don't need to hear from you.
May I sit down?
I have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion already on the floor.
I already made a motion.
And it got seconded?
I seconded it.
To approve it.
To prove it.
I made a motion this on here.
I believe a motion to table can supersede that.
I don't know.
He does.
Well, I'll second it for discussion purpose.
He thinks, he thinks I'm right.
Well, you know, you probably are right.
They can move the table.
Does somebody, somebody second?
Is there an urgency in moving this motion tonight?
I'd say I'd move to table her motion.
Yeah, but I mean, out of respect for another counselor who wants some time to consider it, what is the urgency?
Well, we waited how many years for this?
I guess that's my point.
Another two weeks, right, for doing that with Center Plan, and why can't we do it with this?
Is there an urgency, Eric, that it be acted on?
No, it's January.
It was just a motion, I mean, honestly, it was just a motion.
I think Al Rose is perfectly right, Counselor Rose, to, because there is no hurry, this was, this site was actually chosen by Fran, and, and the primary, having, understanding how the town council works, and having gone through this process for three years, the primary concern of the town council, in my understanding, has always been, is this okay with Fran? And so the place that was the most, that was most reasonable for him, for me, is the most reasonable place, because something is better than nothing.
I totally agree, and this is how you start.
Exactly, and I think this is a great...
We have a piece of property that I'm seeing for the first time tonight, and I've got questions about it.
So that, that's, I think that's perfectly reasonable, I'm here to support Fran, if he's here, I thought, I thought he wouldn't have been here tonight, but...
He had an appointment, but he is available, he said if the council wants him here...
Mike, can you invite him for the next meeting?
Oh, no, yeah, sure, absolutely, but in fact, the question is, he said to me before he left, he said, if you want me here, or if you get into the meeting, and you want Fran, he's two minutes away, as he would always say on everything, so if you, if you truly want him, I can call him, and he can be here in two minutes, and you can, you can just come back to this, but Fran could be here in two minutes to tell you yourself, but...
We can wait two weeks.
He, he doesn't have any, any, any problem with it.
And Park and Rec did vote on it at their November 30th meeting, it's not in the backup, but I was at that meeting when they discussed it, and they did, that was their recommendation to forward.
Yeah, in, in fact, Fran, Fran has some, or has expressed to me, within the, this configuration, the barn closest to the park that's outlined there, he refers to as the pole barn, and the other barn back here, he refers to, with sort of this darker roof color line, refers to as the milk barn. You know, Fran would like to talk with, you know, the council about trying to get use of one of those barns, not necessarily the pole barn by the park, but the milk barn, and, you know, he's got some storage issues, and he'd also, you know, like to talk about, you know, the, the haying operation out front there on the Poco Ground Festival, and he's got some, you know, ideas for that as well, so it probably would be best to, you know, have Fran in.
We're just beating a dead horse here, nobody seems to have any urgency to have this acted on, we got somebody who has a legitimate concern, wants some time to consider it, let's move it over for two weeks and move on.
Yeah, we have a motion to table it.
Yeah, he's always here.
Moving by Fran.
Any second on it?
I already seconded it.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Nanna?
Yes.
Counselor Root?
Yes.
Next, we're moving into new business discussion in action, Steve Grant recommendation, economic development.
Yeah, I have prepared a memo for you on this, Steve, I indicated that the deadline is approaching for January 15th for the next round, and there's a concern in terms of what, what to do with respect to the actual project, so we went to the Planning Commission to talk to them, and the recommendation is, in terms of economic development, for 1599 in terms of site preparation and cleanup, and then, and a timing issue, as a, yesterday, I received a phone call from DECD on our application, on the brownfield application, we are not going to be selected in this round for the brownfield, so we were out on that, and that was information that came available yesterday, so that leaves just this opportunity under Steve, which I believe is, is, again, it's hard to say if we can get funding, but I think it'd probably be a pretty strong application, and that was a recommendation from the group.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Town Planning Goals Subcommittee to submit an application for 2016 Steve Grant funding for the cleanup and site preparation submit an application for 2016 steep grant funding for the cleanup and site preparation of 1599 Foxham Road, North Branford. Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Endolani?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Bennet?
Yes.
Councilor Manam?
Yes.
Councilor Roob?
Yes.
Next item, review of policy regarding plaques for town members' draft policy.
That's in your package as well, and there was some, there was some feedback from council members, and this was essentially what went on the plaque for the outgoing members, and certainly hope that's something we could follow for, for future.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
I did.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Endolani?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Bennet?
Yes.
Councilor Manam?
Yes.
Councilor Roob?
Yes.
Next item is review of town council policy on public meeting code, conduct code.
Yeah, this is something that Deputy Mayor Fawnin had asked for review, so I've included the minutes in which we made that decision, along with the town procedures and code, and copy of the sign-in sheet.
Well, since it was my suggestion, I'll, I'll give my reasons, and people can make their own mind up, but it seems to me that the chairman always reserves the right to rule any party out of order or not to recognize him to speak at all if, if he, he is so inclined. I think that's sufficient control for controlling meetings going forward. We had a unique situation last year where we felt it was some additional protections needed to, A, keep the meetings from going on forever, and B, to control people who, who with some feeling were taking advantage of the public forum to address their concerns in a manner that was at best disrespectful and in some instances outright insulting to town representatives and people who disagreed with their point of view. So we adopted a policy, but I, I feel that it's probably too restrictive, and I'd like to reconsider it, and I'd like the consideration of actually revoking that policy in view of it's the inherent power of the chair to, to control the meeting, which I think is should, is and should be sufficient.
What part do you feel is restrictive or too restrictive?
You got to sign up, we can only talk for three minutes.
I, I, I think there's a lot of things in there that's a little too restrictive.
Yeah, I tell you what, Joe, I agree with you totally, and I'll make a motion to, if we can do that, if we can just.
I'll second it.
Vote to eliminate this procedure.
Well, we did have a motion, so I don't see why we can't eliminate it by motion.
We had a council for thirty-something years and we never had a policy like that.
So you, so I guess the original motion was to adopt the procedures and code of conduct at public meetings, so now you would like to.
Withdrawn. You second that, Anthony?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Endolani?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Bennet?
Yes.
Councilor Manam?
Yes.
Councilor Roob?
Yes.
Next item is retirement plan information.
Just a update, annually, the actuaries, milliman, present to the pension committee the status of the pension plans and actuarial valuation, and in your package, you have three documents. You have a thicker book, which contains the municipal and the police plan, a thinner book, which is, covers the fire plan, and then a color, two-page document. If you go to the, the thicker book first, which covers the town and the, and the police plan, the key number that typically the council is concerned about, it starts on page 16, and that's the amount of money required to put in next year. On the municipal plan, as a percentage of pay, it's going up from about 31% to 38.8%. And it's not really surprising because as, that's a closed plan, as you recall, and as folks start retiring, the number of, in the, in the thicker book, page 16 in the thicker book, the number of people left in that plan is dwindling. So as a percentage of pay, it's not surprising that percentage is going up. The last person in the plan theoretically could have 100% employer contribution, and the actuary has kind of advised to try to go to a flat dollar amount, but we use that percentage of payroll to allocate that cost to the various departments that have people in the remaining plan, so I'd like to keep it that for the time being. The police plan, you'll see, is 38.6% current year, going down to 37.9% current, next year. Turn the page to page 17, you'll see the funding percentage. All three plans are roughly about 60% funded, which is a test, testimony to the town council's continued funding of the actuarial retired contribution 100%. You read about neighboring towns, that their pension plans are in serious financial distress, and that's because the governing bodies don't choose to fund the plans appropriately or properly. If the actuary says put in 10%, they may choose to put in 6% or 7%. It's a tough year, whereas this council is always living, living by the, the word of the actuary. The actuary says put 25, you put in 25. There's no variation off of that, and that, that leads to a, a solid plan. The thinner document covers, again, the, the fire department plan, and page eight on that is one of the key sheets. Again, the actuarial determined contribution, 190,000 roughly this year to $201,000 next year. That's the key, again, that plan's about 60% funded. So in, in summary, at 60%, both of the plans are pretty solid.
Can I ask?
You sure could.
I've heard that 70% is really the comfort level.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say, I mean, if you look historically in the last two years, the police plan has gone from about 50% up to about 60. So we were, we were pretty low last year, and we have made progress to get back up to reasonable, and that's a function of the retirements and that, and that sort of thing. So in a year where you have some significant hits to the assets, they're not there to perform, and coupled with the fact that the market really hasn't been in our favor this past year, it was kind of a, a poor year for us, the result is, is a 60% valuation, funded rate, which again, you're right, it's not stellar, I wouldn't say it's a home run, it's probably a double, maybe coming on to a triple. It's getting there. Any questions about the pensions? Again, Deputy Mayor Fawnin is, is the chairman of the pension committee, and runs a tough meeting over there.
Thank you. Next item is final numbers for North Branford Intermediate School.
And so just as, as a summary to wrap this project up, the largest project in the town's history, I'd like to give you the financial final numbers of where we stood. We spent about $35.6 million on that school. We received $18.299 million of a state grant, roughly 51%, which was really good. If you recall, when that school was built, there were space standards that we exceeded[1377.99][1378.02]intentionally, and we were probably around a 38% reimbursement rate net after you factored in the excess space that we built the school for. Our state representative, Vinnie Candelora, through some legislative work up there, was able to get our reimbursement increased. If you recall, about a year ago, we were looking at owing the state $117,000 of state grant, and we went back up to Hartford and fought and was able to do about $229,000 swing, which went from the state, us owing the state $117,000 to them owing us $111,000. We always knew that there was some error in their calculation, and we got them to agree to that. They had issued a final audit, and based on our visit to Hartford, they agreed to a revised final audit, which they says never, never occurs, but we were able to make a good case. There were still some ineligible costs that I think we will learn going forward. Some things I really don't agree with, there was costs when, if you recall in that building, that we had issues with water, and a couple of times, the gym floor flooded during construction, and we had to go out and rent equipment, but we rented it like that. We didn't go out to bid, we didn't advertise, and they called that an ineligible cost without going through the bid process. There's a series of things, and then some of the contractors' bills, they listed things as allowances for work, and then backcharged them, the word allowances raises flags at the state, they don't like that term. So, you know, there, there are certain things that they, we'll learn in our next project to make things better, but I think that overall, a 51% state grant on the process is really favorable to where we were going to end up initially. And that resulted in about $4.5 million of that bonding money that we've since used a couple of different times, and it leaves about a million and a half to use towards the 16, 17 CIP. So at that point, we'll close it up as next year's budget, put that money into the CIP for 16, 17, and put this project to bed.
Do you know what the status is on the high school roof projects?
Interesting question. The.
Because that's been ongoing also, not as long as NBI has.
No, no, that's, that's true. That lies in the hands of an outside party who we need to get information from to comply with the state, Mr. Hibbert.
But he's, he's told the building committee that everything has been submitted to the state, and we are, it's in their hands. So where does, where's the truth in all that then, I guess?
It's precise to every story, right?
Maybe we should have him come to our next meeting.
Yeah, I, I can show you numerous emails between Kim and Michelle coming back from the state, looking for information, and a lot of it relies on, on Tom Hibbert's supplying the information to satisfy the state, so.
On which roof project, because there's two.
I believe, well, the oldest one was still.
The gym, the two gyms.
Right, the two gyms.
And then there's the big project.
The problem with the big project is that they changed their philosophy, they want to change numbers, to change orders numbered concurrently, not one and two is you, you know, two, one and two on you, they want you to be one, two, three, four, five, six, which they've done before. So it's a change in the way they're, it's a different guy looking at the numbers up there now, and we're working through him with Kim's, Kim's diligently on it, the board of it, to try to get it resolved, and there's an email today, in fact, from Kim looking to Tom to say, you know, what's the status of these things? Because they've been dragging on, and our fear is they keep dragging on and dragging on, and we're going to, you know, lose sight of them and, and be a problem, but.
Okay, so I'll bring it up at building committee on Monday night, because they have building committee, and Tom Hibbert should be there. Mike, can you make sure that he's at that meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Next item is citizen statements and petitions.
I just have a question for you, Deputy Mayor Fawnin, so as long as I'm here, you were discussing liaison with the different commissions, and.
You just need to come up to the microphone more so that they can record it.
Okay. As long as I'm here, I thought I would ask you about liaison for the Economic Development Commission. I didn't hear it mentioned, I assume it's on a list somewhere.
I'm not sure that we've ever had one to the EDC.
No, Joanne.
Joanne Webb.
Joanne was the.
Oh, she was?
At the EDC, yeah.
Okay.
So any, oh, okay, I mentioned to do what, whatever you do with part three, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions, statements? Okay, next, we're going into executive session.
So move.
Second.
We need to include anyone, or?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Town, hotel manager, Anthony.
Town attorney.
Fire, fire chief, fire commission.
Lauren.
Yeah, Lauren.
Lauren.
Well, you might want to go with.
In order.
Separate your.
Yeah. So for Fire 911 system, be the fire chief and the fire commission. Field rental and other claims, town manager, Anthony. And then appointment of potato and corn festival, Lauren, town manager, Anthony. Yeah. And 911 system.
Just take them in order.
Yeah.
So let's have us vote to go to executive session.
Roll call, yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Endolani?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Bennet?